Okay, I'll call us to order and we'll ask the clerk to establish the quorum of the board, please.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Present.
Commissioner O'Keefe?
Here.
Chairman Whitfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Present.
All right, all members are present, thank you for that. We do have our agenda here before us tonight. Is there any modifications to the agenda that has been presented and advertised online? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. You do have it in front of you and in the packet, and there's packets there on the table as you come in the door, and it also can be found online. Is there minutes from our January 26, 2023 meeting that was held here at 7:00 PM? These minutes have been prepared by the clerk. Is there any concerns, questions, or issues with these minutes that have been prepared? Hearing none, do we have a motion, excuse me, a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, at this time, we do ask if there's anyone that would like to make any public comments, if you'd like to come forward and speak before the board tonight. Anyone like to speak tonight?
I would.
Yes, please come up. Please state your name for the record.
I am Angie Teems, HR manager for Walker County Government. Hello. Just a little background about me, I come from 25-year service with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee, the legal division. I have been a landowner in Walker County for 25 years. My husband and I live in Chickamauga. He is a graduate from Gordon Lee, and my 16-year-old daughter is about to graduate, well, two years, in Gordon Lee also. I say this because I want you to know that I am vested in the county, and I am very interested in its future. So I'm here today to talk to the board about that, the future of the county. First of all, I want to say thank you to each of you for your service. You come every month, twice a month, for your meetings, and you are dedicated, because I know you're taking a bunch of calls from the residents and the employees, and me, all the time. So thank you for all of that that you do. My purpose for speaking tonight is to encourage the board to consider recent comments I have made in memos and reports and in personal discussions that I've had with most of you. My commented observations come with great expectations from myself and the people I speak on behalf of. There is much-needed movement on many topics across the county and within the government infrastructure. These topics were brought to my attention in an effort to bolster and to strengthen the county, the future of the county. Please consider what your next actions will be about the observations that I have given to you and the comments that I have made for the future of the county that will go a long, long way to your constituents and the employees, who are also constituents usually, because they are residents of the county, and they will appreciate your consideration. So please consider what your next action is, but above all, please take action. So I'd be happy to talk to you about the comments that you know that I've made, my memos that I've given to you, at any time. So does anyone have any questions for me at this time? But again, if you have any, please feel free to contact me. I'm happy to elaborate on anything that I've given to you guys, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the job.
Thank you, Ms. Teems.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to say that I do take everything that you, any information that we get through any HR anywhere else very seriously, and things are being looked into and trying to move things forward, and I know that I will be willing to make a commitment to the citizens, that we are, as a board, moving forward to try to address some of these issues for the citizens and the employees as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I certainly appreciate it.
HR is a very important department, so just appreciate your hard work, and thank you for all you're doing, Ms. Teems.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else to? Okay, we'll move forward on our agenda. Okay, we have a resolution, and then I'll ask our district attorney if he would like to make any additional comments, he can come up at that time after I read this. Resolution R-009-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to transfer an employee of the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit District Attorney's Office to a state-paid county reimbursement employee. Whereas the District Attorney's Office of the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit serves four counties of Catoosa, Chautauqua, Dayton, Walker County, and is jointly funded by the appropriations from the state legislature, appropriations from the four counties, and federal grants. And whereas certain employees, excuse me, whereas certain employees of the District Attorney's Office are funded by the state of Georgia, with all the benefits of the state employees, including medical, dental, life insurance options, and whereas OCGA 15-18-20.1 allows for counties to contract with the state of Georgia in order to allow non-state-paid District Attorney employees to be processed through the state payroll system, thereby entitling said employees to the same employee benefits as other state employees. Therefore, be it resolved that the Walker County Board of Commissioners authorizes and designates the District Attorney of Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit as a designate for the purpose of contracting with the state of Georgia Prosecuting Attorneys Council of Georgia in compliance with OCGA 15-18-20.1 to transfer District Attorney Office Administrative Assistant Employee Sandra Bailey to become a state-paid county reimbursement reimbursed employee. Be it further resolved, the District Attorney shall be responsible for transferring to the state the required funds necessary to cover the contracted compensation and benefits for such designated personnel, provided such funds are available within the approved county budget for the District Attorney's Office, so resolved and adopted the ninth day of February 2023. So, Mr. Hart, would you like to speak?
Sure. A little bit wordy, so I think I can explain it. Basically, as it says, our funding is a little bit unusual. We have funding by the state, then all four counties, and then we fund almost our entire victim witness program with a combination of VOKA grants from the federal government. But all of our folks are considered state employees, and some of them are paid by the four counties. We put in, we pay into state retirement for all of those county-paid employees right now, but you have to be actually a state-paid employee to get health care when you retire. Now, we already pay for it, we've already paid in for Ms. Bailey for years, but unless we move her over here, she doesn't, is not eligible to elect health coverage in retirement, which she plans to do later this year. So I put it in the budget that all the counties approved last year, because it is a little bit more expensive, the state benefits, but we did put it in there, and that was approved. Now, the county already does that with other employees, the public defender employees are kind of in the same situation, but all of theirs are already under the state-paid county reimbursement program. I don't do that with everybody, because it is more expensive. But that's already in the budget, and then since we've already been paying in for her retirement costs for years, the state covers, that health care covers, the county's not on the hook for it in the future. So we're just, in order for the Prosecuting Attorneys Council to contract and do that, they've got to have this resolution.
Also, too, if you would, for those that are here tonight that may not know, kind of give an overview of how the budget for the four counties is done and allocated based off of the, our district.
Sure. Well, we follow, basically, all our folks, since they are state employees, we follow the state pay scales, which are set by the Prosecuting Attorneys Council every year, and then, once that's set, then I come to the counties if there's been a change in them and ask to match those that the state has done, so we keep everybody on the same pay scale. We, I put, I believe we have eight state-paid ADAs, and those are our highest eight people, and then they provide two state-paid administrative assistants, those are our two highest state-paid, or state, our highest administrative assistants. They provide one investigator, and that's our high, I put our highest paid person in that spot to keep the counties from having to pay. And then all the state mandates, both statutorily and constitutionally, we have to make certain victim notifications, they provide $0 for victim services. The counties fund one position together, and then we have VOKA grants that cover another six, 80% of the cost, and the four counties pick up the other 20%. And the county split that based on the percentage of the population of the census. So Walker County, for years, serves as our fiscal agent for decades and decades, and it's kind of a thankless, extra job that you don't really get anything for. So once Catoosa became the largest county by population, I asked if they would be willing to take that burden on, they did last year. So right now, Catoosa funds everything upfront, they pay everybody, and then they basically bill out to the counties their percentage of the population based on the most current decennial census. And I think Walker, your percentage went down, I don't know the exact numbers, 35%, somewhere in that neighborhood, 34, somewhere in there. Of course, Dayton is the smallest, it's just under 10, Chautauqua County comes in around 14, and Catoosa's a couple percentage points ahead of Walker. So it gets complicated.
Very good, your explanation. Any questions for our district attorney?
No, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right, so we do have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is Resolution R-010-23, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member to the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, whereas the Georgia Governor, George Busby, approved Act 421 on March 23, 1977, creating the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, a political subdivision of the state of Georgia and a public corporation. And whereas Section 2B of the Act 421 governs the appointment and term of service members to the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to the committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas a vacancy exists on the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, and whereas Chairman Shannon K. Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as the member of, to serve a, serve as a member of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, Adam Cradalager, for the term ending on May 31, 2027. Whereas Adam Cradalager is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, and has expressed a willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that at the appointment of Adam Cradalager is approved, so approved and adopted the ninth day of February 2023. Adam has come forward and actually inquired about serving in this capacity. He has worked for several other water districts in our region. He's worked for Signal Mountain Water System, he's worked for Tennessee American Water System. He's currently the manager of the water system that covers the Cell Creek area, North Hickson area, all up in that area, and they also have, I think, around 7,000 or 8,000 customers. So very similar in operation size. He is a resident of Walker County, and myself and Brandon Whitley, our manager, has met with him and felt like he would be a great addition, and the knowledge and experience that he brings to the community from his water and sewer experience, we think he would be a great addition. So with that being said, I'd like to make the motion that we approve his appointment. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Let me see his letter of his appointment. Okay, we have a purchase order, 2023-841, for the amount of $58,034.76 to purchase two 2023 Ford Escapes for the assessor's office, and this would be funded out of our general fund budget. If y'all recall, the fleet at our assessor's office is, was getting up in age, and it was having a lot of issues just with aging vehicles, 30-plus years in age, and so last year, we purchased two of the Ford Escapes, these are all-wheel drives for the assessor's office, and, you know, we made a verbal commitment to them that we would try to replace a couple of their vehicles every year if the budget would allow us to do so. So working with our partners at Prater Ford, he notified me back September, October last year, that he had ordered some of these vehicles, and when they came in, that he would let me know. So he notified me probably two weeks ago that these were in production, and he felt like he would have these probably within the next 30 to 60 days. So in order for him to hold two of these incoming vehicles for us, he does need us to approve a purchase order, so he'll mark those down as being sold, so they don't get away from us. So these would go to the assessor's office once they come in, and once they were set up in our system. Any questions on this purchase order?
Chairman, are these two going to be replacing two? Will those be going to surplus?
Well, they would be two of their oldest vehicles, we would let them determine which two they wanted to turn back in, and then our maintenance staff at the shop would determine if those needed to be surplused out, or if there's somewhere else that we could use those in the overall condition of them.
Okay, thank you.
So they got two new ones last year, and then these two, I give them total of four relatively good vehicles, and that should give them what they need for a period of time.
I think their fleet, they've got probably about eight vehicles, I think. So we may have to look at even next year, a couple more, just over a period of time to replace their entire fleet. Good questions. Anything else? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order to Prater Ford in the amount of $58,034.76?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved, move forward with these vehicles. Okay, the next item, we have a purchase order, 2023-848, in the amount of $31,338 to purchase six self-contained breathing apparatus devices for Walker County Sheriff's Office, funded from our Fund 222, which is money that has been set aside out of the proceeds of some of our ARPA money. So at this time, Pat Cook is with us, and I'll let him come and give everyone an overview of the unfortunate need of why we got to have these.
First of all, thank you for your time and allowing me to speak to you. It's really not a happy conversation to have to discuss why the sheriff's department needs self-contained breathing apparatus. We're not getting into firefighting business, I'll promise you that. Due to the fentanyl problems that we are encountering on the law enforcement side, we have found ourselves thrust back to the days of working meth labs in the containment areas that we're having to work in. November 4, 2020, I lost a brother in the line of duty to a fentanyl exposure. Good solid night shift deputy corporal supervisor made an arrest, and he packaged his evidence correctly, the problem was, is that the contact amounts on the exterior of the packaging were enough to absorb through his skin, his family found him dead in his bed that afternoon where he'd gone home to go to bed. On the night, 1/19/2023, as a SWAT team commander, we were sitting in Drug Task Force and serving three warrants, one in Tennessee, two in Georgia simultaneously, in reference to fentanyl production. The house that we hit on Lael Road, just outside of Chickamauga, the last number that I got while they were still weighing dope was the excess of two kilos of fentanyl, which is four and a half, pushing towards five pounds. We took a pill press, that was a commercial-grade pill press, where they were producing their own pills, that was capable of turning out 4,800 pills an hour. There was enough dope on the floor in that house, you could have laid down and made snow angels. It was a highly toxic environment, I had to pull my guys back out. We had to acquire some old SCBA's that were hand-me-downs from the fire department to our jail staff, and had to put drug agents in Level B containment to go in there and clean out the evidentiary recovery on that house that was reminiscent of the days when we were working meth labs. On June, or excuse me, January 30 of 2023, the morning shift responded to Walden Spur Road, we had three fatalities from fentanyl usage. The night before that, on the 29th, Catoosa County responded to French Street, which is just outside the city of Roswell, for three more that were down from fentanyl overdoses. The three that we responded to on Walden Spur were fatalities, the ones that Catoosa responded to on Walden Spur, on French Street, one of those, I believe, is brain-dead, I think the other two have survived. The problem was, Catoosa County Sheriff's Office used all their Narcan on the suspects, and two firefighters went down, both of them former Walker County firefighters, but excellent technical firefighters. Both of them were hospitalized for about four or five hours from fentanyl exposures. Two of the Drug Task Force agents I was working with, we almost Narcaned them because they both got lightheaded, we had to put them out, let them stay out of the containment area. The point is, this is epidemic, and this is the most dangerous, and let me qualify that, I was Drug Task Force agent for six and a half years. I worked meth labs nonstop, and this is the most dangerous stuff I've ever dealt with. The reason that we have asked, and absolutely let me give every kudo in the world, the Walker Fire Department, because they came to us offering help, they saw the problem we were having. For evidence recovery issues, we have to contain law enforcement officers to go in and clean this stuff up, it is nasty dangerous. So that's the whole reason that we're here tonight, talking about a $31,000, what's traditionally a fire expenditure issue for the sheriff's office.
Well, thank you for coming to speak, and I appreciate that, you've done a good job giving a good summary of that, and just in full disclosure, so the public and everyone at home will know, the board took this very serious when this come up, and we had this request, so if you'll see on this purchase order, it's dated on February 1, 2023. I actually took this on as an emergency situation, and reached out that day and the day before to every board member here sitting here tonight, and we looked at this as an emergency situation, so we actually went ahead and purchased, or got this purchase order done, and got this product on order, so we wouldn't lose time. So actually, what we're here to do tonight is for Pat Cook to come and give an explanation, but also for the board to ratify this purchase order, because in full disclosure, again, these items have been purchased, and hopefully we'll have these things to us as quick as possible. We didn't want to lose a week and a half over a, over a process of expenditures, because anything over $25,000 of a capital purchase comes before the board, so I didn't want anybody to come up and think, well, why didn't they not already do this? We did, as soon as we got this put together, got the price quote, you know, we went ahead and moved forward this very quickly. So do we have any other discussion of the board?
A couple, two questions. One is, when are we expecting delivery? Are they here?
Yeah, but delivery date.
Delivery date?
Should be just five or six weeks.
Okay, and so until then, we've got, we've got something that we, that they're able to use, that's, that's qualifiable, I guess, not?
Let me say right now, the fire department's been nothing but.
Oh, I believe that, I just wanted to know about the date and make sure that y'all have what you did. My other question is to the corner. Billy, you've got up and you've spoken to us about this situation before as well.
Yes, sir.
I'm curious to know where your position is on protection, because when you roll up, you don't necessarily know, if it doesn't come in as a certain call, it could be just an individual that had his.
Well, me and the chairman of the board has talked about this, and I'm getting my packet together, I was also on that scene over there, I backed off, let them guys do their thing, but the city of Wofett has gave us the full gear, the boots, the stuff, the things, we just got out and breathing that throughout the tanks, and me and Shannon has talked about this on several occasions, just in the last week, and like the officer said, this stuff is deadly.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that, because, you know, we will be the ones to allocate the funding, I wanted to make sure that we were looking, addressing that for your office, so.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware y'all had conversation about it, but now that we know that you have.
But like he said, even though they bring, they brought them out to us, it could still be on our clothes or anything.
Sure.
I mean, my guys, we keep our gloves on after we get to the hospital, I sent, I cleaned everything, it's terrible, because this stuff is not playing.
We just want to make sure your guys recovered as well, so, thank you.
If I can clarify, part of what we're doing right now, all of our deputy sheriffs are issued APRs, which is a, is a personal respirator.
Right.
The, the filters that we use on those are CBR-in-rated filters, so they will filter virus. We got those based on the COVID issue, which is sufficient to filter fentanyl, it will stop.
Like a particulate?
Yes, it's, the microns are such that those filters will stop them, they're good for chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear environments. The hiccup about the SCBA's is for the extended amount of time for evidence recovery, if we were having to assist bring the body out, that's the necessity for the SCBA, so we can contain them in Tyvek, put them in Level B containment. A regular deputy responding to that, we're going through training right now, teaching them to properly don this, the APR, how to run their gloves, we're trying to get Tyvek suits in all the squad cars for them, if they find themselves in that environment, but the SCBA is mostly for evidence recovery or extended period of exposure into that, that area, so.
And I can say, they all work, we all work together. I listen to those guys when I pull up, because I'm used to the last one call, and I tell my guys, you listen to those guys, they'll let you know when you can or can't, and I appreciate that, because we don't want to lose anybody.
Yes, sir.
Hey, does the chief have adequate supply of Narcan for all of our deputies? You do not?
We, we have small amounts of it, we've gotten them through some grant issues, Mark Vezie was the last one, he did an excellent job, going through some training that was, that was grant appropriated.
Okay.
We are, I think most of our deputies will have a dose or two on them, I think I have three doses in my truck.
Okay.
And we also carry it before, so we do get some.
We, we have had very good luck, and I, I think there's some more talk, and I'm taking too much of your time.
No, you're good.
I think there's some more talk with HCI.
Okay.
We've had a real good relationship in that if a deputy had to Narcan someone, they were replaced it off the bus, and then they were fielding that bill on to whatever the medical bill was for the transport. The problem is, is a lot of these people, you're hitting them with Narcan, they're snapping right back, and then they're refusing medical treatment, and they're running off, so we don't know where it goes from there, so it's harder for the deputies to get replaced.
What's the ballpark cost, you guys may know, how long is just a dose of Narcan?
It's gone up a lot, I do know that, it used to be dirt cheap.
How much?
Honestly, I don't know.
What I'd ask, what I would ask is for you to, if you don't mind, to get a little information on that?
Sure.
And bring it back to us, because if we need to, I mean, it is epidemic level, and like you said, it's deadly, you don't get but one shot with it, you know, one chance. So I'd rather look at it, and maybe if need be, this board may need to look at the allocation or appropriation of some funding to get a little bit, or to help the, the emergency services across the board.
Yeah.
Whether it be sheriff's department, fire rescue, or car as well, we just want to make sure that we, that's something we don't need to run short of, especially when it could be one of the first responders.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's hit with it as well, you know, not the guy that took the stuff, but the guy that's trying to save them.
One of the biggest concerns about it is understanding, and a lot of people don't understand that the application of Narcan, it may not be a one-and-done issue.
Right.
You can Narcan someone, independent upon the amount of opiate or opioid-based drugs in their system, you can exceed the Narcan's capability, the Narcan dies, and the dope comes right back. So there, we have had multiple cases, we've had multiple Narcan applications. You hit them, they start to come back, they burn through the ability of that dose of Narcan, they have such a high concentration of opiate, opioid-based drug in their system, it comes right back, and they go right back out, you have to Narcan them again. So having multiple doses oftentimes is a necessity on one call.
Well, and I think you just got to get the devil's head, it's gone up quite a bit, and I don't see it coming down with the epidemic, I think I see it probably going further up. So if, if that's something that you wouldn't mind doing.
I will find out.
Put something together, and we'd like to look at it.
I also want, one more thing to relay to you, the thermal imagers.
Yeah.
We've gotten Pasquet and all the uploads put to them, we've got one ready to stream, so if you need that to come back, so you can understand what that technology does, we'll be prepared to bring that to you.
Awesome. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
And also, Chief Hodges looking into the Narcan, and I put him, giving some information today to contact Mr. Vezie as well, so hopefully they was able to connect today. Okay, very good, so do we have a motion to ratify this purchase order to municipal emergency services in the amount of $31,338?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Askew made the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Okay, we do have our monthly statistical data report here for you that we put out every month. Shows our January, December and also our prior years of statistics where we've been tracking. So we had a hundred and twenty-nine dogs intake and six cats. We had from our adoptions, rescues and returns, a hundred and thirteen dogs and fourteen cats. Code compliance, they had twenty-five inspections in compliant. They had twenty-seven violations for citations. Cases closed, there was three. Roadside trash is ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty pounds of trash. We did see some numbers coming in for registered voters. Again, many times those registered voters is when people renew their driver's license, they're asked about registering to vote. So there's fifty-three new members registered to vote. Calls for service, our fire department responded to five hundred and thirty calls for the month and also installed five smoke alarms. So those of you out there, if you don't have working smoke alarms in your home, please reach out to fire headquarters and they will come install you some fire alarms. Mountain Cove Farms is very active in January with thirty-five nights stayed in the cabins. Single-family home construction, there was seven permits pulled in January. And then we had, I'm seeing some high points here, forty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty visits to our website and twenty-nine additions to our newsletter. And then we had twenty-seven hundred and forty-eight trips on our transit bus. So active, busy month on transit. A lot of people moving through our transit system. So at this time, that gives a summary of our statistics and then we'll move to the next item on our agenda as our commissioner comments. And we'll start with District One. Mr. Blakenmore?
Just appreciate everybody coming out. Appreciate what you do, Ms. Angie. Appreciate all the county employees. Just one quick thing, baseball, softball signups are going on at Rossell Rec. You can sign up online. I'm not sure the link. Go to Rossell Athletic Association on Facebook and you can find that link or you can sign up in person on Saturday. Thank you.
There's one thing I did want to mention for a little discussion. It's a spreadsheet that I've gotten, I think we're all copied on from Chief Hodge, about our backlog and our repairs. And, you know, I think that, you know, I think they've all been kind of communicating with Rick Carr. I don't see Rick here tonight. Usually he's here. But after looking at some of this and kind of looking at what the size of our fleet, what do we ballpark our fleet size for?
I think there's about six hundred-
Six hundred vehicles?
Units. And some of those are lawn mowers.
Right, right, right. But vehicles, I think, were around four hundred or so.
That's probably a good range.
And so we've got like, what, maybe three mechanics now, I hope, I think?
No, we've got, there's five mechanics.
Well, the point being is that there's obviously, we've got a lot of equipment out of service and we've been, when we've been, and I like the idea of a mechanic that would be kind of specialized for some of the stuff that we're farming out. I think it makes good, very good sense. You know, instead of farming it out, bring somebody on that could help keep the apparatus up and running. And especially just like we've talked about with the situations with this, you know, we need our apparatus out there for all types of situations, not just fire. But no, I just think it's very worthy of conversation and I'd like to see us, you know, discuss it, talk about it or actually maybe take some action to put something together to maybe look at moving in that direction. I think it would relieve the shop and help them to better keep our other equipment, you know, maintained. And I know it would relieve some stress on the fire services because I do believe, Chief Hodge, could you just give me a quick ballpark on, and I've asked before, but I don't have it written down, on apparatus that's out of service compared to what, and I'm just curious, is it like a percentage or?
We've got six pumpers and bigger trucks in service and seventeen out of service.
I accept.
Six, two RVs, we've got six out of service and four in service.
Okay. So there's obviously a necessity to look into this type of maybe a, I guess, a position. So I would like to, like I said, I wanted to bring that up and see if anybody else had any comments or concerns about it or if we'd like to discuss it and maybe try to move that, maybe move forward in that direction of some sort.
Maybe Chief can come up to the podium and maybe, Chief, can come up, just maybe a couple of questions. So with regard to a mechanic that is specialized in working on apparatuses, specialized in fire equipment, is that, is that going to be someone that's going to be difficult to find?
Potentially. Because you got to pay them what their, what the market value for them would be, which is around sixty to sixty-five thousand. I think there's an interest, according to Rick, from our shop, that one of the current mechanics wants to pursue that. The emergency vehicle technician, there's, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's four levels and it ends with being able to service ladder trucks, which we would need is all the way through that level.
Would that include pump service and that kind of stuff?
So they would, they're, a prereq, and don't quote me on this because I have to look it up, but a prereq would be ASC certification mechanic. And then, and then they would add to that with EBT level one, two, three and four. And then we'd need to send them to Water as Hell pumps, different manufacturers of fire pumps. We have Darley, Water as Hell pumps, brand pumps that we would send. They would need to go to a couple of weeks learning how to work on each of those. That's just a, they don't have to, but that's what would be recommended. So they-
How long would you think the training altogether would take, time to complete all the training?
What we've looked up is each, each one's just a few weeks. You have to pass a test. So you're exposed to the education and then you have to take a test to pass it. And then it would be on the job. With, looking at, looking at a program like this, which is what I recommend, it is not going to be a miracle fix because we've got so much equipment out of service. It's something, though, and what I put together in the spreadsheet was to show that it would, it would maintain in the future. When we catch up, something like that would maintain. Because I think that they're going to work on all emergency lighting, pumps. See, right now, we could get, we get a truck into the shop, their parts are backordered, delayed. I mean, they're having to wait sometimes two and three weeks or longer on certain parts. So the truck comes into the shop, it waits two to three weeks. They get it fixed, they send it back to us. It's got a pump issue. We have to then outsource it and we're on their schedule. The gentleman's name is, last name's Brackett, that works on our, that we outsource to. It could be three to four, five, six weeks. They could be a part he has to order. So that truck ends up out of service for two months. Where if, where if we were proactive in a, in a mobile type EBT, they would free up the shop space, move out in a mobile unit to the stations, be able to fix the mechanical side of the truck, the lights, pump service. We also pay several thousand dollars for ladder testing, pump service testing every year that we have to have for ISO. So that an EBT tech would also do that. We spent right at, round numbers, twenty thousand in two thousand twenty-one with outsourcing to Brackett's company. We spent nearly eleven thousand in twenty-two. That was a, it was a good year. And we're at about, we're encumbered ten thousand right now, probably. And we've got invoices for probably five more to date this year. So we're probably looking, we're probably sitting around fifteen thousand just to date in this fiscal year outsourcing.
So they could easily run on up into twenty or twenty-five thousand this year?
It's going to.
Well, so, you know, it just seems like it's an alarming number when I just saw the amount of vehicles we had out of service compared. And I hear again, like I said, the shop guys are doing a great job. It's just, it's that catching it up and our fleet has grown. And so just felt like it was very worthy of-
Yeah. And let me say, it's just my opinion, but the shop will never catch up with, with a good five hundred, four hundred and fifty to five hundred fleet vehicles and five mechanics. That's my opinion. Because our fleet's old. Just the fire fleet alone is, I mean, those FL80s, they bought seventeen of them. They're twenty-six years old. And, and we're, I mean, they literally, they literally see them all the time back and forth because things are just going to wear, they just wear out or constantly being, having to be fixed. Again-
Is it going to be our 80s?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's what, fourteen of those. They did, they sell a few of them off.
They did, they did. I think fourteen's correct that we have currently of those. And believe it or not, they're the, those, those trucks are, they've been good trucks, but they, they sit for a long time. And so when the truck sits, to me, it ends up having more problems. So when the fleet started going down, we started pulling them into the front as reserves and frontline units. And they're, they've just now become a career side, the full-time side of the fire department, running all day long. And they're just, they're showing their age.
Now, do you have an update on the three new fire trucks that have been ordered? I know there's been delays in getting them. Have you got a good feel of when those are coming?
I do. I just got an update two days ago. We're looking at the end of March of going to South Dakota for final inspection. So that was March, yes.
Those were the five-fifties?
No, those, the big pumpers.
These are the big pumpers.
Okay, okay.
Three Spartan in South Dakota, Peach State.
And then we have a total of seven QRVs or they have five-fifties. But those are still, what, a year out probably?
Met them today and they're hoping for the first three around October. And we have no idea on the other four. Just, they're, they're at mercy. They're now, they are now putting it out quarterly at least. So you know in this quarter if your five-fifties being manufactured the next quarter.
Because they're waiting on chassis.
They're waiting, they're waiting on chassis. They're at the mercy of Ford when it comes to that.
And we do have, you know, some really good mechanics at our shop. I mean, they're tearing into engines and, you know, getting real deep into mechanic work. The position we're talking about here with this EBT tech is more like, Chief says, getting into the pumps and the ladder equipment and, and other things outside of the combustion engine and all, things more toward the back of the truck, so to speak.
And I think maybe things that could be fixed, like you said, at the, at the station, like you go out and they can fix it there.
Fix lights.
Yeah, lights.
Well, we're doing all the lights currently.
Well, they are. The shop's fixing everything, but it's overwhelming.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. No, they're doing it. But I'm just saying, those are the type of things I would see a mobile unit doing.
Yeah, it would free up, the concept would be freeing up the shop, the space. Because I asked Rick, you know, what's common in the world of working on vehicles? And it's common for one mechanic to have two bays. So if one vehicle's in, they're working on, they're waiting on a part or something, they're, they're moving, they can move back and forth to be efficient. And we don't have, we don't have, I mean, there's, you can go, you go up there and look right now, there's, there's not really a lot of, when you pull those fire trucks in, there's no, there's no room.
As Chairman, you just stated.
And we just added a bay.
Which is a good point, is we are getting, you know, we've got some great guys on staff and we are digging into it. But when you start breaking down an engine, that's a longer-term fix, you know? So you are tying up an area, a machine and all that. So yeah, I just think that-
Yeah. I mean, I was up there last week and they had two engines pulled down and going back with one. I mean, they're doing a great job, but that stuff takes time.
It takes time and it ties up the guys. And so I just think it's a good, something that we really need to look at, a pretty good proposal. And I just wanted to see what you guys had to think about it, maybe throw it around a little bit and see if we might revisit it at another time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And before I finish, I did want to thank all of our employees and citizens for your participation, all the employees for the hard work that you do. Like Commissioner Blakenmore said, I'm not sure of all the signups, but I know it's getting that time of year. I see the ball field lights are on just about everywhere. So encourage everybody to get out and participate. So, thank you. Yeah, good point. So I'd like to say a thank you to our partners with the city of Lafayette. We have started the work on the west side of Annex Two there with the drainage work and that should get done hopefully this, by spring. We'll get the mural painted there and that'll be finished up for the Honebeath Festival. So a good project going there. And also, I mentioned it last week, two weeks ago, the concert in Villa Now for our American Idol contestant is Saturday. Mark asked you and I are going to sing a duet? But yeah, y'all, please come out. It's from two to four Saturday at the Mercy Valley Community Center. It's going to be a great event.
Well, you left out one thing. You better bring a chair.
Bring a chair. Oh, yeah, that's what-
Because we may run out of chairs.
They may.
We got a hundred, a hundred and fifty seats to set up, but yeah.
Bring your folding chair.
That would be good.
Y'all are the soggy bottom boys, right?
Something like that. Something that resemble that remark.
Appreciate everybody coming out tonight and thanks to all of our county employees. Appreciate all the hard work that everyone does. I do want to mention a county employee that has reached a real milestone in his career. Captain Chris Anderson celebrated thirty years of law enforcement service with the sheriff's department last week.
Awesome.
He is an accomplished law man. And Chris, I want to say thank you from myself, this board, active and retired law enforcement. Thank you for the job that you have done and congratulations on a tremendous milestone. Thank you.
Pretty good. Very good. All right, we'll move on to our agenda. Do we have a need for an executive session tonight? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. But Commissioner Askew, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank y'all all for coming.